I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He is a great, great.
It seems like a year and a half ago, it's never been up.
One bit?
Yeah, it used to be in the 1989 range.
The end of the box, huh?
I gave him a ride.
I'm gonna give you a ride, see if it's coming.
It's coming.
If he will. And we're not in the pumps. Well, you made it, so we got four now, okay?
I made it earlier, except for you.
I told him on the phone, "Hey Guy, are you going to contribute?" So you won't be able to make that?
What?
He's in the middle of a pump job, he said.
Right.
Okay.
What about your pumps?
Hold on, just one second, talk to the mayor.
Where are we at with them pumps, Guy? What about our pumps? I don't, I don't think that new one's supposed to be here in June. I don't think we figured that'd be here till July. Well, okay. Talk to you later. And me too. Didn't we figure that new pump wouldn't be here till July?
If, if I heard, it's like a fair check, I have it listed.
It said nine new days from the day we ordered. We'd have to go back through the minutes, I guess, and see. Anyway, we got that. Anyway, okay.
I thought I knew my part of that.
Yeah. Uh, minutes for the echo meeting to be approved. On paper. Days could be days, but may and should be. On paper. I guess you folks are up.
My name is Donovan Mary, I'm a county assessor. I guess I'm not, I'm a new mayor, my, so I'm doing also what I have to receive.
Why is there a church?
Yeah, maybe through the church, I don't know. What I have, what I have is just a little bit of a brief presentation. So we've been, Karen and myself, and kind of via the, the burden treasurer have gone around and tried to meet with cities and their councils and the municipal commissioners. I'm not really sure, I hope you understand how levies and such affect the tax revenue and such it comes in. On the front side, this first page here on the front side is how it's actually figured, proposed value. Budget is equal to levies, which is value divided by times, just given times your levy rates. On the backside, on page there, you can see the city of Basal, and you see the revenue that you brought in in 2021, and the value associated with their certified tax charges. The assessment value of all that. We've also then prepared a second note of boxes for you to kind of consider. One of the... This is the county, what basically took place this year is the state tax commission came into the ratio study on the county campus. And our revaluation team thought we were going to be okay on values, ended up being was we were at about eighty-five percent. So the first thing our evaluation team did was go ahead and take a look at all the land values out there, all the lots, the one acre lots and under the, in the county and in the cities. And we took all those values up, we know that one acre pieces of ground with no water is seventy, approximately seventy-five thousand dollars an acre to be allowed. That's not what the one acre or the two acre area is all. So our, our one acre lots countywide were on forty-eight thousand to fifty-five thousand. And then that got us to eighty-seven percent, which is closer, but we went up in the ninety. The state tax commission, Idaho code sixty-three D three fourteen, says we have to do between ninety and one-hundred and ten percent of value. And so we ended up then trending the homes throughout the county. And that got us to ninety-two percent. So the county is currently at ninety-two percent of value, of market value. And what that did basically was add about a billion dollars of revenue to the county. The county last year was at four point, pardon, three point three billion dollars in revenue, pardon, in value. And this year we're going to be a little bit closer to four point two billion. So one of the things that we were coming around and we're happy to talk about was to take a look at your levies, take a look at the value that's gone up in your city here at Basal. And see for sure where your revenues are going with the, basically countywide we raised the value about thirty percent countywide. So that doesn't mean your levies necessarily are going to go down thirty percent, but as a city council, as you figure your budgets and you look at what your needs are that come in here. And might you think of a serious level for levies and what you do with it. With that, do you want to bring us to one more?
Oh, I just appreciate, I work closely with Tressa and when those, when the L twos come and you're figuring, I think it looks like last year you levied...
Why don't you come up for a sentence, Jim?
Okay, sure. So last year you levied nineteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And so if you look at your levy by Idaho code, you can raise that, increase that three percent. And I think last year you had a little bit of new construction too, that you got some value that added another five hundred dollars to your value. So what we...
New construction?
Yes, so any new, like building that happened in your city? The value of that gets timed, times by the previous levy rate. So it, it added about five hundred and ninety-five dollars to what you put levy, along with the increase in the three percent. So we'll take that. These values are just what the assessor just sent to the state tax commission. So I think, Donovan, if I'm right, it went from about eleven million to now it's, or not. Yeah, it's now at seventeen million, I think is the value.
Right, it was previously, it was at, at the city of Basal, the value was twelve million, on that second line.
On the second page?
Yep, on the second page, twelve million, six thirty-six, oh seventy-seven, that was what your value was. Your levy rate was zero point two two two.
Yeah, no, right, where these, yeah, right there on the one that has the... Oh, right.
And, and we've added, in the city of Basal alone, we added another six million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars.
So that's now on your... Yeah, if you look on the very back, that's your new value that they, they assess. Yes, compared to twenty twenty ones. So that'll, you know, that gives you more value. You take how much you're going to request, so if you take your, at least the three percent, you're up to about twenty thousand that you levy taxes for.
So you've gone up about thirty percent, you know, from twelve million to eleven million.
So when you get that, we will, Tressa will get the L twos from us till the first part of August. Because the state tax commission has to take the numbers that the assessor gives, and then they have their operating property from the state, that's all the railroads and utility companies, and add that. And then I send that information to Tressa, and we kind of talk back and forth, and she visits with you about, about if you want to take your full three percent. Usually the city of Basal always does, because you have needs, like all the other cities, and don't have a lot of other revenue. I'm, I'm not sure, you probably don't go off the top of your head, the other revenue like sales tax and all of that right off the top of your head. You do receive the help of the revenue for your city.
Where's that from, from the county?
No, well, no, sales tax comes from the state, so she gets a, we get deposits for the sales tax, the mortgage, stuff like that. We also get things from like franchise fees and stuff like that, like quarterly and... So that it funnels through the county, but it's actually state money. But I think you have, you get a, some that come directly to you, and I think they'll come back to you. They, they do their own, they deposit stuff under their paper. Yeah, so I, they made a change last year where you get some that's just directly to the cities, so.
Is that already in? Are we out of that after shooting?
It comes, I believe.
On a quarterly basis.
Yeah. Yeah, so. So anyway, we're just, we're just wanting you to be aware of the increase of the values in your city. Some property owners may see a little increase, some may not, some way it's a...
It's not open to a bill, just first came, wasn't increased.
But the value, but not necessarily, maybe the taxes, maybe. But, but you, you're, you also have your school districts that you pay into, and I think it's the...
Shovel first, and you pay with shovel, first fire district, and so it's a part of your tax.
They, yes, they do, and the ambulance, which is... Yeah, yours is the, cemetery is the Basal, Goshen Basal Cemetery, this is some of the city.
So the one thing that, and I'll tell you right now, because we trended, we didn't come out and physically look at your home and say, okay, so that was a square feet, we read it too bad. Because it was trended, if you think your value is off, please come in and see us at the assessor's office and meet with our revaluation team. They'll run it through a hard program called Marshall and Swift, that we can actually plug it into and see if, and we found some that we've been overvalued, and so we lowered the values on, we sent the people a new assessment notice. We've had some that were over, that we were undervalued, and that we're not taking you up because you showed up. And we just, we thought your house was worth a quarter of a million, and it's actually worth three and a quarter. We're not doing anything about that, we're just simply saying we want to make sure that we're right. But we did ask for trend in order to keep the state tax commission out of our hair. The other option would have been if we hadn't met that ninety-two percent or ninety percent threshold, the state tax commission would come into the county and take everybody to one hundred percent of value. And then there's no recourse, there's no more decolonization, it just goes straight, this is what it is. So we, we do still have the DOEs of order decolonization, the commissioners will sit as a board of decolonization this month, year of June. So if you're not satisfied by our values as the assessor's office, you can sure appeal it to the board of decolonization of the commissioners. And then if you don't like their decision, you can take it through judicial review or to the state tax commission. So we have a couple of different avenues of appeal, and we want people to know that we're not perfect in our office, but we sure think we got it right. If you think we're off, come visit with us, we're happy to sit down with you and we'll let you talk through the program and see how far we can do.
It's interesting, I just got back from a state commissioner meeting, and statewide, the values are up three percent, the entire state. And if you've seen house prices in your area, it's almost ubiquitous, but people are going to pay, and that's what the assessors have to keep up with those sales values. And that's what's affecting the whole state by the way.
Well, it's going to crash, I could say.
Well, possibly, so.
Maybe, we're only working two years behind, so we're working with twenty-twenty sales. And that's one of the things that people, when they say it's going to crash, well, it's going to have to go down for a couple of years before that we should start taking it in terms, because we're so low on our pressure right now. But I absolutely get that, it's too rare. It's a toll to walk.
So, but I guess I just wanted you to know, I, I work closely with Tressa, and we've talked back and forth on when we get to that time. But she, I'm happy to work however we need to do. It is appreciated, yeah, yeah.
So what about, do you have a Facebook page or anything like that, if you want? To be out there with your constituents in the, in the city, we're, we're happy to meet with anybody in our, we've got, uh, end of June, but this is the appeal time, if there are any values.
So this, this one with the orange. Are we in on all this? I see irrigated agriculture, maybe, is that?
That is the total tax roll, and that, that was twenty twenty-one assessed value, and those are the different areas of the, the value that came out of it. So we were at three billion, two hundred and seventy-three million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
That's the county?
That's the county, that's countywide.
The whole county, and then you're, you're on the next page.
So you're on the next page.
Forget, okay, that's the county's new page.
So they stay on the backside of that at twenty twenty-two, and see our, our proposed value that we submitted to the state of Idaho is four billion, five hundred and sixty million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty. And then on page three, there's, there's the value for the city of Basal, it was eleven, eleven million, three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. And then on the backside of that same page, that's the proposed change to the state of R two, which is seventeen, four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. You're, you're going to end up at about a little over six million dollars for the sum of unit value for the city of Basal.
So are you doing that in all this? It's all great. I don't care if it's up to... Irrigated agriculture, we don't have any irrigated agriculture.
No, so that, that's the whole, this is the whole county.
This part's the county, this part's Basal.
Basically, they're just saying our home values have gone up, and we've just added approximately, what was it, six million?
Right.
All the value of Basal, that's always the same.
So that'll, that'll change your, that'll change your levy rate, and if it does come down, I kind of play with your levy rate, and it definitely does come down. I think last year you were point zero zero one five or something like that.
Last year's levy was point zero one five five.
Oh, yeah, one one five, yeah.
One five five, yeah, six.
Yeah, it comes, it comes down to about point zero zero one one three. So it, you know, ideally your values go up and your levy rate should come down, but it's not necessarily...
That's your call, you're the, you're the county boss, and you're the one sitting in the chair making that decision. That's why we've come around and visited all the city councils and the county commissioners as well, to make everybody aware of that, that there are some serious values going back into your tax and district, and it's considerable, are your levies. But it is probably your, your decision.
Question, the levy rates, what is, what are you talking about, by levy rates going down, what does that mean for common citizens?
Well, your levy rate's going to go down, but it's going to be times against the value.
So that's, the levy rate is the amount you're taxing on the properties.
Right, it's the amount that you figure to tax.
It's the same with, so if you think about sales tax, that's six percent, that's a levy rate. The percentage of the city charge is against the assessed value.
So after, after we, you know, Tressa and I work together, and, and you sign off on your L two is called, that you're going to ask to levy, like I said, last year it was nineteen thousand dollars. But you're allowed to increase that by three percent each year. So then we're going to take that and times that, you know, divide that amount by the value, and it comes up with a levy rate. And then the treasurer takes that levy rate, flips that into each parcel in your city, and, and that's what comes up, how much you pay, so like if you have a...
So the levy rate going down is a good thing for the citizens comparatively, other than it just staying at the same rate, which would increase our tax rate.
Yes, other than this year with the, the really high values that are coming in. We can't, we're not saying, ooh, yeah, we think your taxes are going to go down.
We've played with some of the levy numbers in the city of White, with Charlie and Pam can speak to that, but like the White House and their house sits in the city of White, over, working at, with the reduced levy rates, so we're not a pretty few dollars, thirty dollars.
You're thirty, yeah, more close to thirty, fifty dollar increase in taxes.
Even though my house has gone up a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in value this year, with the city, because of the, the huge number that the city has got there. And other places on the higher end district there by the golf course, those people who live over there by the golf course and airport, that probably would see a reduction, a reduced rate in the tax, tax and dollars that they're helping out, that would come down.
So it looks like all the buildings are putting money, well, everywhere. And even county, looks to me like the taxes have come down because the, the county's collecting more money.
Well, that's, that's where you guys got to decide what you want to do, because the county, the county last year lowered their levy, and the county did not exercise the whole three percent. So the county commissioners reduce for levy, and they've not picked the whole three percent, preserve your, I don't know, but if they don't take the whole three percent, that repercussion will lock, uh, you don't pay now the foregone, what's that, the foregone?
Yeah, if they don't, if you don't take your three percent, you can reserve that foregone, it's just money on paper. It's not like a savings account, but it does, you know, there is a couple of theories that you... Because your, your, the amount you can take is based on the highest of the last three years. So if you decide to take only eighteen thousand instead of nineteen thousand, then that becomes your, you know, your, your base that the state tax commission's looking at. Sometimes people think that makes you go behind a little bit, but I guess we're kind of proposing that this may be a really unique year, that if you think you've got other revenue, because, you know, the highway user revenue, the sales tax revenue is up about fifteen percent from last year. So we have asked cities, and we're in at the same as the county, can some of that other revenue kind of fill in for maybe what you wouldn't levy for, if you want to help your citizens have a bit less taxes they pay?
So, so basically what you're saying, the city can determine they want to keep it at that nineteen thousand level? And they adjust the levy rate so that, based on the new values, to keep it at that nineteen thousand level?
Yes, yeah, you can determine, right, if you want to just keep it right there and not take your three percent, you certainly have that right to do that, and...
Or if they wanted to, they could raise it up five hundred dollars more or whatever, or spread over everybody in town.
I think last year that your three percent was about five hundred and ninety-five dollars, and so...
So that's technically spread throughout everybody in Basal.
Right.
So the increase that each individual person, depending on their home value, land values, that's going to be like the, that amount. So if somebody could be, you know, like thirty dollars more, somebody else could be fifty dollars more, just because their house is a little more...
Correct, you're right on, yes.
So then, if, if they were to say, okay, at nineteen thousand, um, next year, you know, that they were, they're way off, instead of being nineteen, it should be at twenty-five thousand, is that going to make you change? Oh.
Yeah, so that's, that's the thing, it maybe puts you behind just a little bit, but say like if you didn't take the thousand dollars, that you could increase. You know, I work with Tressa, we, we do a, your city does a resolution that you want to reserve your foregone, and so it's, it's there on paper. And at a, a different, a later year, maybe two or three years down the road, when things have settled better, then if you have a need, you know, you've got a well issue or something like that, you can go in and add that to the, yeah, that you levy for.
So in other words, that percentage, that foregone percentage of that three percent, whether it's one percent, two percent, or three percent?
Yes.
Can be saved?
Yes.
So that in two years or three years from now, we may need to add that three percent for that year, and we can pull that back in to bump it up even a little bit more for stuff like all the pumps going out in the city.
Yes. Yes.
So they, they could be increased of 5%, 6%?
Yes.
Two years?
Correct.
3% or anything like that?
Correct. But, but it's an action that your city council has to take, that you've got to, you've got to do a resolution to reserve it, and then you also have to do the resolution to take it at that time when you want to do it. I, I work with the clerks to make sure we do it right. Yeah.
So what's the deadline on this?
So it's, um, Tressa will get the information in August, and then the deadline to get it back to us is September, I think, ninth, something like that. Oh yeah, you've got plenty of time, and...
Your budgeting process is not changing?
Yes, exactly.
Your budgeting process is not changing? It'll stay exactly the same every year for, you know, it's just the evaluation's going to change the levy.
Yes.
And really, your budgeting process is not changing, you're using this information?
Yes. And because I, we usually don't come and see you and tell you about the values necessarily right now, we'll sit down later, but we just talk.
It is, it's such a huge increase countywide, but we just, we just appreciate the efforts of the city councils and the mayors, and just want you guys to know and give the news on the ground on your, your, your bearers of both good news and bad news, your house is worth more than eight, don't sell it, but you know where you're going. Because it's not getting cheaper out there. Um, a couple of years ago, well, yeah, two years ago, the cheapest home we ever built in the county was $300,000, and now it's not going to be, but we're also $400,000. I need to question.
Well, thanks for letting us come and visit a few.
Any other questions, comments? Can I remark?
I got another question. So would this increase be showing up on this year's price, or would it be on next?
No, it would be just, it's just number one. So the county's always working two years behind, so working the 2020 sales and the values, uh, the tax assessments that go out in, what week?
Yes. November, yeah.
Maybe November, yeah, we do, we decide early.
Well, I got a letter just the other day from the county.
Yeah.
And it said this is not a bill, but it's, oh.
Absolutely. And on that, that's the assessment, assessment notice that came from us from the assessor's office, and I apologize for typo error on the spelling, I own that. But on that notice, you'll see all the taxing districts on the bottom, it lists all taxing districts that are involved with your assessment notice, and whether it's the city of Bay Salt, it'll have a date when you're setting your hearing, setting your budget, it'll also have a phone number to contact the city for. And so whether it's the cemetery district, the school, um, the ambulance service, anything that affects your taxes for you as an individual on the bottom of that assessment notice, it lists who they are, when they're holding their hearings, and phone number to contact when you wish to participate.
But again, my question was, does that tell you what the value, what they've assessed your home at, the value at?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Then you won't get your assess, your tax notice?
Your notice, you won't get your tax notice until October.
Yeah.
After, after all the cities, all the taxing districts do...
But you guys are setting it.
Yeah.
And so we have, we'd have...
You guys are setting your levy for the residents in Bay Salt.
So we'd have to come down to the county to get the paperwork, to do an appeal, because basically, the home doubled, exactly doubled.
Wow, your value did?
Yeah, on the house. And I corrected, I mean, it's not a four-bedroom house, it's only a two-bedroom house with two open area lofts upstairs, and the seller had, previous seller had, Jack did have to try to sell it as a four-bedroom, and it wasn't.
So have you come in and talked to our re-levy guy or some people?
Not yet.
Okay. Please come in and do that, and visit with us, and we just need to know your name and address, we can look it up in there and plug it in through the software, make sure we got things right. We're not about to make mistakes.
And somebody called me on the phone, talked about it, I told them on the phone about it months ago, asked the questions about the property, and I told them, no, it's not really a four-bedroom house, there's two bedrooms downstairs, and then above the living room is kind of like a loft area up there, there's no doors on anything, so it's not really considered bedrooms.
And we look at the squares, whether you can move back through gestures and things of that nature, but, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily, what some people consider the four bedrooms may, may not qualify as a bedroom because it doesn't have a closet in it, it may not qualify as a bedroom if it's downstairs because it doesn't have an egress window, there's a lot of different things that qualify a, in a home in today, today's market, that makes it a bedroom. So we're just looking at the square footage of the place, the year it was built, the construction.
And they had the year off, too.
Yeah. We do that.
Because a lot of it is still kind of too wiring.
Well, thank you.
Come on in.
Appreciate spending time with you. All right.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have an extra one of those ones with orange on it? Thank you very much.
So that 5% could be added on top of the ambulance, on top of the fire district, on top of...
Well, each one of those taxing districts is up to its own budget. So the ambulance and fire is up to their budget, the city of Bay Salt, you guys set your budget.
They all can go up 3%.
They all could go up 3% absolutely.
For Idaho, they have that ability to increase.
That's an actual...
They increase, not, it's not necessarily their budget, they're just increase what they're going to levy. So your budget, I don't really know, is your budget maybe a $25,000 budget, or it's in the works? Oh, okay, but last year's budget was...
I can pull it for you.
Well, it's okay, just so you know, we're not looking at really, it's not 3% on the budget, it's only 3% on the amount that we're levying taxes.
You're levying.
So you can have a, you can have a $50,000 budget that'll be levying the 18,000, that's what you're going to look at, the 3% on top of that. All right, thank you very much.
Does that make you pay, okay, if that's what they owe, you're paying him?
I'm listening to talk, but I'm going to make another call on others.
You get paid off then?
Yeah.
Oh!
Yeah.
That means you're paid off.
Juree needs a phone call too. Needs a phone call as well.
Juree?
Juree?
My boy.
Because she has a rebate about it.
Fair. Yeah, let's finish the...
I got, yeah, sorry.
Let's finish the meeting before you do that.
Sorry.
I don't have time to present the case.
Did you get anything in your eye?
I just had a couple of questions.
What?
I have a couple of questions, if you have, just a couple minutes.
Go ahead, dude.
Well, I just, I've been trying to get in touch with you to find out how the, how the leak test is going, if you have a go time, yes. I'm probably almost as interested in the results as, as you are in how it was due. I know where the marriage is going to be at 7 o'clock on Thursday.
We haven't?
Nothing.
Haven't heard nothing.
Okay. Um, and then I also noticed that you guys are on the beat to this for a wastewater funding study.
A what?
A wastewater facility planning study.
Yeah, I think our name is on it, because they said there was some money out there, so we just got our name on it.
Yeah, everybody was, it's 100% selected last year. Um, and, uh, I think, I think you have about, about a year until you have to get under contract or something, so you have, have a little bit of time to decide whether you want to, want to use that or not. So sometimes cities will put their names on the list just in case they want to use it, but they don't know they want to use it, and they hit it in line.
Well, that leak test is holding us up, we can't...
So that's really what you waited for?
We can't, we've done nothing until we get that leak test.
I think, you know, you have to like June of next year to decide whether you want to, want to use it on, you just have to be under contract. Uh, and we, we love, we love to help you with that, we love the, we, we did some work previously, um, just, just discussing with you about their respect for the principles, but then we, we really had those conversations with you back a couple of years ago.
And everybody was against me.
No, they, they actually, Andrew Fellows was actually...
All was against me when I made it, when I brought that third look in.
Oh, when you brought it up?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, um, you know, all, all along, our, in looking at the numbers, um, our belief has been that the, 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 but, uh, we have, we have no problem, you know, on a person, we don't have your problem, we're supporting your, 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 not at all.
Well, like I say, I don't know, I don't know exactly where we're at on that. I can leak tests, I, I keep asking Guy, and I guess he may be called us and find out what's going on. Follow up on that, because, I don't know. If you're sure to do that leak test now, I would think.
But you have a, oh, I have one more question, this is a, this has half the answer maybe, hold on. This is a pretty wet, cold spring, did you send any things to Burke this year?
What?
This was a, the pretty cold, wet spring, but as I've been sitting over there watching the water come down, you know, the rain come down in the spring, I've been wondering if you guys made it through one a year without sending any water to Burke?
We haven't said a drop to Burke.
So it's two or three years now?
So that proves Robbie and the old mayor at first, they were all wrong, because they told us all along.
But you, you remember, I told you, I thought there was a pretty good chance that you could get live outside of income. Uh, so, anyway, we, the last project we felt like was that we were really happy with how it turned out, we, we liked the, um...
I thought for sure you'd have some answers on the leak test by then.
No.
Well, that, when you, when you hear, give me a call, because I'm...
It's been pretty rainy up until the last, it has, it has been a couple of weeks, so I really haven't had a really good chance to do it, but...
Now, that's, that's true.
Now the weather's a lot better, I would think he would be able to come new on that.
I, I'd love, love to hear the results once you have them.
And, uh, I don't know why it would be any different than the results from the other one.
I, I would, I would expect to be there, occasionally we do get a surprise, but, but we call them surprises because, because you don't have, you know, if you know, because it came all the time, it would be a surprise, it's, it happens very often.
Guy claims it was his fault that the, the second one failed anyway, because he left his stuff, I don't know, whether it's in a box or what it is, and that froze, and then, you know, so, I don't know. You know, you, you're at them people's mercy. Hey, let's be honest.
Who's, what, which people? DSU?
What's his name up there?
Oh.
It's doing the leak test, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think you'd take advantage of it, but, you know, so, but I'll get ahold of him, find out what's going on. Anything else, anybody?
No, just come by.
Andrew, you know, focus on the positive. You have it right, right?
And the key to the numbers, every housing, really, it's only increased by 3%. So theoretically, you can't really, you're going to have, you're going to screw that up, you have to get it from a hundred, a hundred percent.